Well, hopefully live.
Yep.
Welcome everyone to the school eighteenth, 2021. Just as we get this out of the way, if you're hearing us, it probably isn't an issue, but we are having some technical difficulties with the WHCA feed. So this meeting will be recorded in its entirety. As we start with every meeting, if you could please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we have two items on the agenda tonight. So for those of you that haven't necessarily been following along, in our June meeting, we had established this meeting date as a meeting to share some of the work that's been done throughout the course of the summer by various school committee members and with administration on some of our items that we identified as strategic objectives. So that was why this meeting was scheduled. We did receive some additional guidance from DESI pertaining to the reopening of schools. So we added that to the agenda as well. To clarify though, we do not have public comment on the agenda tonight. So the reason you all should have hopefully had an opportunity to see an email and various social media communications go out to allow folks to provide that public comment in advance of this meeting. So that's the way the agenda is set up. I see some folks here. I just want to make sure that we're being as upfront as we can in terms of we're not anticipating public comment in addition to what we received, and we'll get through that. We received as much public comment as I've ever seen being part of a school committee in advance of this meeting. So to be fair and equitable to those that did provide that comment and just based upon the volume of those comments, that's the plan. So just wanted to share that before we got started. That having been said, we're going to move into our strategic plan working group presentations. And I think, oh, actually, one more thing. Welcome Beth Stafford. So we have a new school, well, I guess technically a new school committee member. I believe she's had previous tours of duty with us. So welcome. She was appointed and she'll be serving out the remainder of what was Mr. Cullody's term. So welcome.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, welcome. So what we're going to do, just to share a little bit of context, so we had a number of meetings in June where the school committee, again, working with the leadership team and administration, went through some of the strategic plan and things that we thought as a group were our priorities. And there were several meetings throughout the course of the summer. So I wish to thank all of the school committee members. I was, I helped work with one of the groups. I can tell you they were here bright and early on the day after a holiday. I can tell you they were here several other times, and I know other groups were here several other times. So for the folks that are at home, this is a volunteer effort. So these folks are truly putting the time to hopefully help the district move forward. So when you hear their presentations, there's a lot of things that have been put into those. These are point in time shares of information, so the work still is far from being completed. So what we're going to do tonight is we're going to have all three groups present. And the presentation should range around about fifteen minutes. We will then leave a little bit of time. We're going to try and leave about five minutes or so for any Q and A from the committee members, if we have time from the public. Certainly if we don't have time, please send us, if you have thoughts, comments, please send us a note. You can do that very easily, whinfo@whrsd.org. Feel free to send us any comments. We welcome the feedback. So that having been said, we're going to get started. I think George's, George and George and's team are going to go first for us tonight. So George, it's all yours.
Hey folks, how are you? First of all, thank you. Welcome Beth. Good to see all of you back. So our group consisted of Steve Boyce, Mike Jones, Beth Stafford. We were the one-to-one laptop initiative group. Excellent group to work with. We had two formal meetings and I had numerous meetings with everyone as information was flowing. We might be a little bit different than the other two groups because we're actually going to enact this initiative for the start of this school year. So some of this was with the group, providing feedback. Some of this was with the technology team and the administrators to say, hey, where were we at? But in a, where we left off last year with COVID and so many Chromebooks out, we had to make sure if this was doable, we had to get our inventory, we had to get our stock, we had to make sure we could roll out something that's good for students and for staff and for everyone else. So that is what is taking place. So I will leave it to the will of my three members. If you want to handle it yourselves, if you want me to talk, because I'll also talk next week at the opening of school, school committee, but you tell me.
Well, we, I can start a little bit, okay?
Sure.
So what was learned, and I wasn't on committee last year, but I followed everything, being a teacher and former teacher and everything of what was going on. And COVID was a terrible thing, but yet it provided some positive aspects. And one was the technology and the information it provided of things that were needed. One of the things that showed that what was needed for today's education for the students and who had it, who didn't, and how did we, how did we provide for those students. So by having the students already get those who needed to borrow the Chromebooks, those who needed an internet connection that didn't have it, that was provided, which was wonderful. So what it has led to is we are able this year to provide from grades three to twelve a one-on-one Chromebook for each child to go home and to be responsible for, to bring to school for the coming year. Grades one, kindergarten and one and two will receive half class sets for the classroom. And one of the reasons is it's very difficult for teachers to monitor the little ones on the computer, plus they're not at the MCAS stage either, so that the older students will have. Hopefully, there's all different steps to how this is going to happen and what that's being, as Chris said, that things are being worked on. And maybe somebody else wants to talk about the grant, et cetera, and how we're going to go forward with this.
Sure.
Yeah, I don't mind stepping in. And thank you, thank you folks for being here. And thanks to everyone who's in my group and working together. I unfortunately missed our second formal meeting. Now, it's only a fifty percent attendance and I apologize for that. But what we kicked off with and George did a tremendous amount of work, as he mentioned, he only sort of mentioned it with tech services and others, but he had gathered so much information for us the first meeting. We knew we were in a good spot. Really what it comes down to, and I don't actually remember the details of the grant because I didn't bring that in writing or anything, this is going to provide us the ability to not only have that one-to-one, as Beth was mentioning, three through twelve, but we can now retire ones or repurpose them somehow where they, they can no longer take those updated certificates. And I know you heard me talk many, many times about me and my iPads at work and how, you know, those certificates run out and so forth. This is on the same, same caliber. I know when Mr. Small, myself and the Evanses, Mr. Evans from the Board of Selectmen in Whitman donated each a Chromebook, that had to meet a certain list, a certain guideline. And that's great to have that because now we know what that whole, and it's probably existed for years, but we all kind of publicly know what that, what that cycle is. And I think that's one of the terrific things. But George, I'm all, I'm missing the details on the grant.
Sure. So there was a federal.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Steve, Beth, George, IT staff and everybody. And I think we were able to pull off our goal, maybe a little bit of luck also. And if you can tell us about the grant, would be great.
Sure. So, so the federal government came out with a grant, it's called the ECF grant, and it's, it's basically by the FCC. And what this is, is that it's an electronic connectivity funded grant. It's seven point eight billion dollars across the federal government. It is, is a grant that is not necessarily competitive, but they have to award it. And there are six, seven pages to the grant stipulations. And the Whitman, it is not a one-to-one initiative grant. It is an at-home learning grant. What it allows for is if you have aging devices, or you have students with no connectivity, or you have students with not enough devices in the home because mom's working, dad's working, brothers on the existing home computers, they can be provided with a Chromebook for at school, excuse me, for at-home use. That, now, if that Chromebook actually comes to them with school, that's fine too, but it is not a one-to-one initiative grant. So through this grant and through the work that we had done through COVID, there were very, there were stipulations that we had to meet. And we were able to meet it due to the aging device software that Steve just talked about. So we have a plethora of devices going offline next year, twenty-four hundred, I believe, in seventy-four. However, last year we put out eight hundred and ninety-four to the people of Whitman and Hanson who needed them during the COVID period. So we felt confident in meeting this grant that we would be able to apply for not eight hundred and ninety-four of these devices. So we did. On August the thirteenth, the grant ended. The FCC will be awarding in their timeline, but will, they made no decisions on what would take place previous to that thirteenth. So we have put in for that. What's that, what that is going to do is going to allow us next year, when such, when almost half of our stock is over and ages out, and that means we won't be able to access, especially for the elementary school and the middle school curriculum, anything online because the operating device system style won't be able to take any updates, that's going to help us then receive sustainability as we move forward. So we have approximately four thousand devices in the district. We have approximately thirty-three hundred students. So we are now able through this grant to not only get out our existing stock this year, but to be able to replace some of what's taking place, some of what will need to be replaced, not only next year, but in the future. The goal is, is that you try to go one-sixth every year to replace your Chromebooks. So that one-sixth of your, of your stock is continually replaced so that as students age out and as the computers themselves age out, you are able to replace them in a way that is more manageable than if you just have to get fifty, you know, if you have to get five thousand Chromebooks at a whack. So that is the goal. The question of financial stability was one that we also looked at, and with this grant, we are looking at, excuse me, we are looking at somewhere around two hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year to make sure that this continues and now it becomes part of a student's normal everyday curriculum. However, I don't want to alarm people that we're saying that every single year, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars is going to be added to the budget every year. The goal is, is that we're working with John Stanbrook, we're working internally, we're working with federal funds that are still available for the next three years to start to begin the cycle of renewal that makes this something that is needed, warranted, because this is the new curriculum textbook in a very closed way, if you look at it. But we are happy to say that we will do this. There are more details coming. I had a meeting today with the tech team as early as one o'clock this afternoon to try to iron out all the details that are happening from COVID to now to get them in the hands. But the goal is students will have Chromebooks in grades three to twelve. On day one, September first, they'll have their form agreement. It's called a loan agreement form. That'll go home. Mom and dad will see it, parent guardian will see it, caregiver will see it. Once they sign it, they bring that back, they will get a charger and they will get a Chromebook. There is learning that also has to go along for staff and how to best use them. There is learning that also has to go along for students and how to care for it and where to put it at night when it's plugged in next to my backpack with the charger. But that is the goal that we are entertaining and going forward. At the pre-K level, like Beth had said, pre-K in first grade, pre-K, excuse me, pre-K and K, use a combination of iPads and they'll have half-class sets. If you look at the research, it's really not the greatest thing in the world to give a whole class at that time, that, but it's more for centers, it's more for station work, it's more for that. The goal is after we get everything out, we settle into the school, we now say if we are missing, you know, if students register late, that there will be a redistribution in grades one and two to keep them at their class set, but with the same number of students in the class. So instead of having, if there's twenty kids, ten per class, after we redistribute, we begin the school year, we would then go back to grades one and two and fill their roster of students. But they would not be taking them back and forth. That is not from the research that was conducted. That is, that's just not really a viable solution at that age. So that is the overall goal with sustainability and with distribution. I will probably, I will have more fine tunes if I can't answer a question today, next week, as we roll out the opening of school. But this was a group that was open, was honest, worked hard, and I was a pleasure to work with.
Could you just explain the funds that you will receive through the grant? Or is that not determined?
Yeah, so through the grant, the district is hopeful that we have qualified. We have qualified, we submitted for eight hundred and ninety-four new Chromebooks. The grant will allow that time to receive those Chromebooks through next June thirtieth. So because of that, that allows us to use our existing stock this year, which all work, which will all work with all of our curriculum. And then that also allows us to get a jump on the massive number of replacements because we have about twenty-five hundred next year going dying, they're going offline, and they won't be used for curriculum. So that eight hundred and ninety-four will start that, jump that price point, or lower that price point that now we have to get to so we can get on a cycle that says, every year you replace a sixth of them so that, one, you know, it's sort of going to be a fixed curriculum cost, fixed curriculum technology cost, and two, we can project when the end life cycle is. So these ones that we just put in for will end in two thousand and twenty-nine. And I want to be clear to parents and anyone, excuse my back, that the end of life does not necessarily mean you won't, can't use it for Word function, can't use it for Excel, can't use it for the internet. But what it does mean is you can't use it as a testing material for the state of Massachusetts and some AP tests, and you cannot use it to access the curriculum that we currently purchase. Because it seems that those companies and Google sort of said, hey, if we all stop on the same year, then everybody has to buy more, kind of like Sony's in the nineties, if you had a Sony product. So, so that's what we have to stop. And the reason why we're trying to build this into the curriculum and a yearly price is that there might be one year where we still need that earmark money because the year after, you're going to have to double the batch based on the expiration date. So what we're trying to come up with is that encapsulated amount that we feel it won't go over yearly so that if we have to put that in a revolving count, if we have to hold that because the year later we'll fix and get back on our cycle due to the age of it, that we can do that. So that is, that is our goal.
One of, one of the other things everybody needs to know too, is when you get your Chromebook, that stays with you. For in other words, if you, in Whitman, get it in grade three, it stays with you to grade five. And you get a new one in grade six, this stays with you through eight and then nine through twelve. If you're in Hanson, it'd be different because it'll be three and four, and then five to eight, and then nine to twelve. So that is their Chromebook for that amount of time when you're in school. So they're responsible for those few years. It's theirs.
And I also want to say, not every Chromebook would be brand new.
It's the Chromebooks that we currently have that are serviced that will be put back out there. And then obviously there's, there's, you know, a damage fee waiver system, there's all of these pieces. What is not coming out yet this year is an insurance offering for parents. What we're going to do is what we usually do with tech, with textbooks, because we weren't sure when we could all pull this off, is that it's like a depreciation value if it's completely can't be fixed. So usually what happens with loners, it's, it's keyboard keys, it's cracked screen because you might fall asleep and your headphones are in it, so make sure those headphones come out, or it's a lost cord or something of that nature. But that's going to be on that loan agreement form. And I will say to the people watching and to the citizens, the care that they took probably after the second week of putting Chromebooks out on the street and into the hands of people was something that we were pleasant, I don't want to say shocked by, but pleasantly surprised and shocked by is the care that people took with them. Yes, things happen, but we wouldn't want to charge you the price of a Chromebook if it's a five-year-old Chromebook. So there is like a depreciation scale because there will be three, if not four, levels or four versions of Chromebooks that go out from our exhaustive supply.
We have a couple, couple of minutes left. Any other questions from the committee?
I have a couple of questions. How many Chromebooks total in the district?
How many Chromebooks total in the district? Don't move, because I know that now. As of, as of our meeting this morning, we have three thousand five hundred and sixty. Now, those three thousand five hundred and sixty are the ones that we actually have in our hands, ready to be distributed. There are approximately throughout the last fourteen years, we've had Chromebooks that are still a hundred and forty-seven that have in the buildings, but not really operable or things of that nature.
And is there a total amount that we need for?
Based on this morning, based on the, based on the numbers that we have, this is not total, total enrollment's different because infinite campus, but three thousand five hundred and thirty-nine would be the apex that we feel we need. And, excuse me, three thousand five hundred and thirty-nine, and there are three thousand five hundred and sixty Chromebooks. Now that doubles when you take that raw data because if you are a full-day kindergarten student, you're counted once and counted once, but you're only going to get one Chromebook. So that affords some availability and some spares in a either replacement or new student mode. We also have a reserve cash that we haven't even put into the system yet in case we get an influx of new students or there's a bug or something happens that we still have so that we can make sure that it's not going to be, Jesus, I'm sorry David, it's October and yours broke and good luck, let's hope you pass, you know, so that we can get that back in his hands.
Of the twenty-five hundred that need to be replaced?
Yep.
Is it possible to utilize those completely for the under grade three pupils?
To some degree, yes, you can.
Non-updatable, so to speak?
Yeah, to some degree, yes, you can, except they won't be able to access the, you could probably do that in pre-K and K, but once first grade starts, our curriculum for both reading and the assessments and for math needs what's called the ninety-nine version, and it won't, that will no longer be supported. But you can definitely use those if you forget something, you need to get through the day in the classroom or spares, definitely.
And there's a maintained list for exactly how many devices and when they have that expiration date per se. I think it's a fabulous idea of not only the, the rotation, the repurposing, the inventory, but just, just a solid way to keep everything in line.
So, yeah, asset tags will be written down and everything, so it'll be okay.
Awesome. So thank you. Thank you for the group's work. And I think, you know, it's, I think just by happenstance you went first, but to bring folks back to our June meetings, a lot of the conversations we had as a committee, we need the technology to do a lot of the things we want to do subsequently, right? So you're going to hear from the related K through eight, related arts group, we talked about enrichment programs, we talked about a whole host of other things that we could do. It all comes back to being able to have these devices at home, available to the students so that they can do these things. So this is a really big step going forward. Like, I think George said it perfectly, I had that aha moment in one of those meetings, like, oh, we, there's so much we can't do, whether it's a foreign language initiative or something different in the future, you, you need the tool to do it. So it's the textbook of the future. That's a great way.
Right. And I don't want to elongate this, but it is directly related to our new plans where we have interventionists, where we have tech coaches, so that every aspect, student, teacher, staff, home even, will be able to get that knowledge that they need in order, as we move forward.
Great. Thank you. So we're going to move on to the next one, just in the interest of the time. Again, for folks out there, whinfo@whrsd.org. If you have any thoughts on anything that you just heard, we'd love to have them, so please don't be bashful in sending us a note subsequently. Who would like to go next? Do we got K through eight or early childhood volunteer?
We'll go.
Oh, there you go. You got there first.
Yeah, I'll go, okay. So you also have a, do you mind doing that? I'm comfy. Also walks in over there. Thank you. So Michelle and Chris and I and Jeff work on the K to eight related arts curriculum. We met a lot and it was really great. And I also want to thank Paul and Bill, the principals at Whitman and Hanson Middle School. They came to two of our meetings and dealt with all of us asking them many, many questions. They were very patient with us, so thank you. And it was very helpful hearing from them and getting their perspective on this. So the scope that we talked about, so the one thing, I know that it says K to eight related arts, it doesn't really make a lot of sense to have a program in first grade if we don't have it in eighth grade. And so we talked about starting it in the seventh and eighth grade and making it robust in grade there, and then tripling it down to the elementary grades, backwards by design planning, if you will. And that I think makes sense also for the middle school so that they can be prepared for high school curriculum. So if they have choice at the middle school, that might impact them and engage them more in their choices at the high school. We're talking about long-term implementation. This is not something that we, like the tech group, will be able to work on this year. This is definitely a multi-year project. Our goal is to be able to provide choice to students and to engage them and make them want to come to school. Middle school is that time where they start to lose engagement, and the more choice they have into things that they're going to be interested in is going to keep them there. The other thing that we want to be cognizant of when you start to look at this more deeply is equity across the schools, making sure that students at Hanson Middle School have the same things as students at Whitman Middle and vice versa. So the next, the next three slides are benefits. So I did research on why we should have these programs and how they will help our students. I'm not going to read all of this to you. It's good. We all know that. I guess some highlights, you know, for foreign language, you can see the second bullet there. We've got cognitive functions, cognitive development. I apologize, it is a little small on the screen there. The other thing is, you know, the sooner that children are exposed to different cultures and different languages, the more empathetic they become and better human beings because they understand other people. And I think that's really important. So then music and arts, on this slide, the thing that I think sticks out is the behavioral benefits. So in schools, there was a study done, is it Missouri, where they had higher involvement in these programs and less disciplinary problems. And I think that that speaks directly to engaging students. And so again, I'm not going to be voodoo for you, but feel free. Tech is the last one where, because tech robotics coding is quite new, there isn't a whole lot of research. The common theme with any research that I found was that it was critical thinking and looking at something from a different perspective and trying to figure it out. I will also tell you, at my high school, we have a robotics program and the kids absolutely love it and we talked about it. It's very, very popular and it's amazing that the kids that we wouldn't think are engaged, that is what they're into, you know? So I think that there's all positives to come from that. So when we talk about Whitman, Hanson, in grade three to eight, and what we have offered, middle school, so six to eight, five to eight, Whitman and Hanson respectively, we have your basics, so art, music, tech, wellness, city and scene. And it runs on what I refer to as an elementary special schedule meeting that they don't need those courses each day of the week. It's sort of like a two-day week, one-day week thing. And if you're thinking about retaining any curriculum, that's tricky to do if you're only meeting a course once a week. Elementary schools, art, music and wellness, and the same thing, you know, that's special. So that's currently what we have. We, as a committee, are looking broader and then obviously we can tone it down. We have foreign languages and aspects to it because one of our suggestions is to make it an academic course, not a related arts course, which would mean it would need five days a week. And I'll talk about that in a few. And then the other ones you can see here, music, drama, band, chorus, tech, a life skills course, I think Chris was talking about, if you want to talk about what you thought about that.
Don't, what'd you say, life skill?
The life skills, yeah, that you were talking about.
Actually, I think that was Chris's, we were talking about at one point.
Yeah, we talked, I spoke to her. So it's basically a jack-of-all-trades, like a culinary, or not culinary, Home Economics two-point-oh for the two thousand twenty-one student, where you might be learning some home ec stuff, you might be learning CPR, you might learn how to change a tire, what a checkbook is, all the types of things that parents talk about, I wish my kid knew, give them an opportunity to experience some of that in middle school so as they matriculate to the high school, they have some idea of, of some of those life skills.
So the next slide talks about challenges. And we definitely don't want to come across and say this isn't something we can do. I think that this slide is to explain or try to explain that this definitely needs to be something that we take our time and look at. So obviously staffing, we need more teachers, we need qualified teachers to teach courses. The schedule, the intricacies of a middle school schedule, which we learned very quickly when we met with the principals. So the idea, you know, if we're going to put a curriculum in, we want all students to have choice, we want all students to be able to access it. And that was not how it was five years, five years ago, when the foreign language was in. I think there was a lot of referring to whoever's parents who allowed us, they got the courses they got, right? And, and that's not what we want if we're going to develop a curriculum. The other thing that we learned quickly is that there's not enough time in the instructional day to, under the schedule they have now, there's not enough time in the instructional day to add more. And so one of the suggestions was to add more instructional time to the day. That is a much bigger conversation than this group. And that is all I'm going to say about that. So. So that would be our suggestion, right, investigate it further, and I really want to stress that this can't be a Band-Aid, we can't say, let's just throw foreign language in, you can't put a square tag in a round hole, and that would be what we would be trying to do, if we were just going to try to get it in there this year. So for moving forward, you know, immediate action, we did talk about current courses that are being offered and perhaps beefing them up, training staff, sending them to workshops, revamping the curriculum, things like that, determining interest in related arts. So I think it's great if all of us adults sit around and say, kids should have this, this and this, but kids might not want to do that. And so if we have clubs after school this year, and we find out that there are two hundred kids in the drama club, then we need to have a drama class, and I think that that's a really great idea, because that's going to help drive the curriculum, the student interest, so. I don't, if you want to add anything, or if you have any questions?
I just want to thank you very much for taking the lead, you too, Michelle, I, like Steve, had some poor attendance this summer, but I'm psyched about this endeavor, particularly when it comes to trying to help kids get to school and want to come to school, and I too would like to thank Bill and Paul, huge help for us, you know, the fact that, you know, the schedule alone was a key piece that I had no idea about, but just being able to get their input and bounce things off them is very, very helpful, so thank you very much.
Questions, yeah, Steve?
Yeah, um, thank you for this, the, you know, having the students choose courses that interest them, would that mean like, say, in the spring, they're looking forward to eighth grade and they're choosing that, and I'm only thinking of it like for planning for Jeff and George about staffing and who they might need, and, you know, do they have to go out and recruit, or is it in-house?
So part of that is really getting a dipstick from the students what they want this year, and then moving forward to seeing what's out there, and how we could modify our current staff to see their interests?
Yeah.
Because we do have staff that are multi-talented, and if, you know, one of my English teachers decides they could teach a drama class, and we're able to offer that, that's no add to the budget, it's just a change of how we're looking at things.
Yeah.
And I know we'll ask them if they want to take a trip to the JFK building as part of a related arts, I think they'll all jump on board with that.
Just get open.
But I think that's, that's this year, the plan here, it was great working with these folks, because we were able to really broaden ideas from different perspectives, all the three members have kids in the district and have kids in various times of the district, so we really focused in on engagement and what a true middle school experience could be. The schedule is a hurdle, it's tough.
Yeah.
And I think we'll be having some conversations with the principals on how to redesign their schedules, with the association on how to maybe broaden instructional time with adding time to the day, I think that was a big thing, and not adding time to the budget. So these are all conversations, the good part about this is, this wasn't, hey, let's present it, and we have to be able to do it in September, October, we have time to do this as we enhance our related. I think the key piece here, what the committee really drilled down to, is foreign language should be an academic course. We've treated it as, well, if you want to take Spanish, you can take Spanish, we think it should be available to students if we choose a certain language or give them that opportunity. To go, to backtrack with George and your committee, Steve, broadening the ability to teach differently using technology might afford related arts to really expand in the future. So as we move forward, all three of these groups, I think, will be value-added to our strategic plan and what we do for kids in not only the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, twenty-two plus.
Yeah.
So it was a really good drill.
Wonderful, thank you.
Don?
I would add, as Stephen said, polling the students, I think is fantastic, I, just as an example, I know Dr. Jones at the high school welcomes students to come to him and ask, you have an idea for a club, and I know recently some students started a calligraphy club at the high school, and I don't know that any teacher would have come forward and say, hey, I'm, how about I offer calligraphy? But the students did, and it really took off, and they did, they made cards too, and service cards for people, so it's great to go right to the students and ask them.
Good. Any other questions from any of the committee members? All right. Last but not least, early childhood education, did you want the lights down?
You want the lights down?
Oh, yeah.
Sure, probably, the show's better.
George, you got it?
It'll probably be quiet.
Do we need an intro first?
Nobody taking that.
You can intro it, you can intro it, or however you want to do it. Don?
Oh.
Do you want to go up after, or do you want to talk from here?
From here is good, I guess. Yeah, myself, Fred Small and David Forth were on the Early Childhood Education Working Group, and we're going to start our presentation with a short three-minute trailer for a movie that you can find on Amazon Prime, and it's called No Small Matter.
Babies in the beginnings of humanity grew up in these very rich extended families. So in that kind of context, caring for children, teaching them, just getting the work done that you need, they all take place at the same time. And of course, the world that we live in now is a very, very different world from one.
We have a society in which moms and dads both have to work to even support a family at all. The central problem is that the ability to provide that nurturing attention early in life is less than ever before.
Good job.
And Wade, she just isn't cutting enough pay bills.
We couldn't afford to put him in preschool. Dawn is with him all day, and I'm with him all night.
This notion of the American dream, that is fundamentally not happening.
Because as a family, you know, it took us that much to get her here, that putting her life in someone else's hands means so much.
One years old, he can't say anything, he doesn't sit up, he doesn't walk.
When those workers, I said, in childhood, they impact the way our bodies work for the rest of our lives.
These are our children, our families in this country. Ignoring this and just going on as if it's going to correct itself, that's a disaster for us as a society.
This is not the way it's supposed to be.
We have a deeper understanding now of how important these early years are, and why.
We're unlocking the secrets of the brain, first time in history, we never had a way to look into a baby's brain before.
What's going on up there is rocket science.
Babies' early experiences create the foundation for all that follows.
I want to be there, Miss Honey, I want to be the one that's like, you can do anything!
They are doing the work that will really fundamentally make a difference for the outcomes of these young children.
I got my son a baby, eh!
We need leaders in every community to step up and say, every child should have access to high-quality early education.
If we get this right, our country will look dramatically different.
Whatever we want to call it, childcare, preschool, home, we have to do it everywhere.
So we've divided up our slides, we're going to share.
Go, put it up there again.
David?
All right, so I'm going to begin by discussing the Whitman Hanson Regional School District, current early childhood education program. Right now, at the preschool level, we offer for three- and four-year-olds a half-day and full-day program, tuition there ranges from thirteen-hundred to about sixty-five-hundred, enrollment is currently limited to eighty students. At kindergarten, we offer it for five-year-olds, and half-day comes at no tuition cost, but for a full-day kindergarten, we offer three thousand two hundred per child for a year. Current enrollment is two hundred and thirty-eight students, here in Whitman Hanson, only sixty-two percent of all students attend full-day K compared to the state average of ninety-six percent. In our surrounding communities, almost every other community around us offers a universal full-day kindergarten program at no cost whatsoever, the only exception would be Hanover Wood offers three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
And Fred?
And before I go, I've got to say that Ms. Byers did a yeoman's share of the work here, and, you know, I do want to thank her, because she did a ton of this.
We all met together.
Yeah, but you did a lot of putting together, and should be noted in its time, and thank you for naming that movie after me. The mission of the district is to provide each student with a quality education that promotes student success and responsible citizenship. Our goal was to share the benefits and create a pathway for a high-quality, universal, early childhood education for three-to-five-year-olds in our towns. Our short-term vision, if I can only read my own writing, but was to identify how to provide universal access to full-day K. So that's on the short term, and that consisted of budgetary concerns, space concerns, the wonderful answer we got back from our administration was, if it gets funded, we'll find the room. So that was a very good thing. And in the long term, to have a sustainable pre-K and K that is going to be, obviously we want everything to be second to none, for the benefit of our youngsters from three to five. So the long-term vision, to stick with the, how did Jeff put it, twenty-two and beyond?
Twenty-two and beyond.
To go over the benefits of high-quality early childhood education, on the educational piece, I'd like to thank Superintendent for allowing us to invite in Dr. Foley and Dr. Jocelyn, Dr. Foley is Duval Principal, and Dr. Jocelyn is the new incoming Indian Head Principal, and they shared their educational expertise in their profession, so I would be paraphrasing anything I say regarding curriculum, because I am not an educator, but certainly they did share, in regards to specifically full-day kindergarten curriculum, students who attend our half-day program and our full-day do get the same curriculum information and program, however, the benefit to a student attending a full day is that they have the ability to, of time, time throughout the day to use and learn that ABCs and one, two, three, and so forth, and transition as well, and they have the opportunity of lunch and recess and breaks in between. Throughout a full-day kindergarten or a half-day, it does provide students the opportunity to learn soft skills and executive functioning. We know now that these are skills, the foundation of what students will carry with them into A lot of people will say also, early childhood education is daycare and it is play, and it absolutely is play, and that is how students learn, through play, at this age. Last, the educational benefits are direct and indirect, and the impact on all students, and I would say from our research, the benefit of high-quality early childhood education access for all students is that there can be fewer remediation expenses in later years, and therefore more funds available for all students, and that's how indirectly providing full access to all students can indirectly impact for the benefit of all students.
In terms of equity, as I'd already stated, sixty-two percent of students who attend a kindergarten program at Whitman Hanson attend a full-day program compared to the state average of ninety-four percent. A lot of that has to do with the access and availability, based on family socioeconomic situations. In terms of community, there are studies have been done to show that kids who attend half-day kindergarten going into first grade have a severe learning curve, which requires teachers to use their time and resources to help remediate them, to catch them up with the students who had attended a full-day program. In terms of society, there are studies been done by Harris Cooper and Ashley Batts of Duke, who have found a positive impact on attendance, confidence, social interactions, and ability to work independently for those students who had a universal early childhood education.
And as to the economic benefits, every single benefit that you've just heard, educational and equity ties into an economic benefit, because if we're starting our children young, and we're putting everyone on the same playing field, as was, as is said there, we're investing in prevention, not in remediation. When that student's in third grade, we don't have to have those reading specialists. When that child goes into first grade, it's not so many in the class, it was sixty-something percent that went to full day, that leaves an awful lot of students that don't go, that are only in the half-day program. Teachers aren't spending their time trying to catch those kids up, and that's a cost savings, and that's a direct benefit. So the economic benefits are multiple.
So what's next, our recommendations as a working group? In the short term, is to work to implement universal access to high-quality, no-tuition full-day kindergarten, beginning in school year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. For the long term, our goal is, and recommendation, is to form an early childhood education subcommittee to focus on and support this short-term recommendation, as well as efforts to expand universal early childhood education to three- and four-year-olds.
Awesome.
And so what comes next is our questions and essentially a task for administration. It includes questions of building and classroom space, that would be to look at enrollment trends, perhaps this even means looking across district, you know, district-wide enrollment and district-wide building space, what supplies and/or curriculum would be needed. Staffing would of course need to increase to allow for more full-day classes. A question of transportation, perhaps savings by not needing transportation in the middle of the day for AM or PM pickups or drop-offs, but perhaps more transportation in the morning and afternoon to accommodate those. We would absolutely need engagement with our town, our town leadership, community and families. And then there is the financial cost, as far as the operating budget, how chapter seventy-eight may be affected, would we see an increase? And are there any available grants? And the details on the grants, as far as full-day kindergarten, is that they were offered by the state from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand seventeen. So for almost a twenty-year period, there were full-day kindergarten grants available to help towns get these programs off their feet, they're no longer available for that. However, the goal in continuing to look at early childhood education for three- and four-year-olds is that we're hearing news across the country of perhaps implementation of that and grants becoming available, so we would like to keep a pulse on that, if and when those grants become available, that we do not lose out on those as we did with full-day kindergarten. And in closing, just to remind, or repeat what the movie said, you know, these are our children in our community and our families, I do believe ignoring this and going on as we have been, and not providing this high-quality access for all, and expecting it to correct itself, would be a disaster. So I look forward to continuing to work on this.
Questions from the committee?
Do you know how much it would cost? I mean, right, we'll be, because there was an override five years ago that had full-day kindergarten on it, and I was new to Hanson, so correct me if I'm completely wrong, I may be, so, I mean, I don't want to say that that's the elephant in the room, but I think that's the elephant in the room, where how much is it going to cost, and then how are we as a committee going to convince families who already paid, or who didn't have that option, that this is in their best interest?
Yep.
I'm asking as a devil's advocate type thing, like--
So we certainly did discuss costs within the working group, I felt it wasn't our position to put a number on this, however-- However, your point is very valid about families who've already paid, and that came up as well, and I think that's an important piece with the community engagement as well. So I'll turn it over to Jeff to share.
So one of the pieces, I came to one of the committee meetings, and I asked the committee not to get in the weeds, because these questions are all, and they put it up on the board, that will turn over to the administration task, and then we will start to present, if the committee so chooses, this is an option for us to move forward as a goal for myself and my leadership team, be able to present pieces as we go to make sure it's sustainable and cost-effective. That one question about families from the past, I'm not sure. I kind of look back at in the past when we didn't have an athletic fee, we implemented an athletic fee. This is almost a retract, you know, on that. But I think I didn't want the folks to get bogged down by the dollars and cents. I really was looking for, this is a why. This is a, why do we need to do this? And then I can then bring back to you, and you've given me the why, I can give you the how.
The how and the how much?
Yeah, and the how much.
Right. And I know, so I did listen in on the meetings, and I know the, you know, between a meeting with John and Fred dug in and David and Don, there's definitely some rough numbers out there, but I think there's a lot of ways to get to those numbers. So I think, as Jeff said, it's going to be more appropriate to do it kind of correctly and right and feel good about that than to try to guess and just throw stuff out, because there's so many moving parts, even with costs and even like tuition and, like, the group spent a lot of time, these folks looked at, what do folks pay today, and is it even, it's not really covering our costs today? And so there's a lot there. So I think you're looking to kind of make sure the committee is in support of continuing to go down this path, understanding that there's more to come. Is that fair? Yes. Sorry, just, yeah, go ahead, Chris.
I just want to thank you, Chris, and Jeff and George for facilitating this. This is a pretty new thing we're doing here, and I think it gives everybody a chance in the committee to feel more invested, and we can, you know, really dig into some of these issues that we prioritize, and I hope we do it again. I think it was a great exercise.
I appreciate, one, as I said publicly when we started this in June, it helps me as the superintendent and my leadership team to have a focus to where we want to go. And you've provided some of the why, instead of us finding the why, presenting it to you and then getting caught into the cycle of, well, I don't know if we can afford that, and back and forth during the middle of the school year. So as you said, put in the work over the summer and move forward with this, and I think this will be an evolving process as we go. It was worthwhile.
Yeah, and I mean, I can't stress enough how much time and effort folks put into this, so I think that's a really good thing. In terms of, one of your next steps with the subcommittee request, one of the agenda items we should have on our meeting, I believe, we got to talk through this, but there'll be a bunch of stuff on the agenda, would be subcommittee creation, so we can certainly add that as a potential subcommittee, and then we can talk about that with the full committee in terms of, do we want to have an early childhood? I would offer the same to the related arts group. You may want to think about, I'm not, either way, however you want to do it, but that may be another initiative that we want to continue to move forward. Again, leave that up to the will of the committee, but we will have an agenda item for subcommittees next meeting, so we can kind of carry that conversation to the next meeting. So, sorry, did I see another hand?
No, I just want to add on a personal note as far as universal, all-day kindergarten in town. I moved to Whitman just 10 years ago, October of 2011, and I was not a school committee member anywhere, and I did not follow school budgets or whatsoever, but I had heard Whitman offered full-day kindergarten. And I moved in, and I called the registrar or our central office, and they said, we're very sorry, we don't have any space. And I said, but you have full-day kindergarten. She said, well, we had a lottery this year. It was the year we were very full. And I said, but I'll pay. I'm willing to pay. And she said, no, I'm very sorry. So my child went in the half-day program, but she had come from a full-day kinder care program at four years old and was already doing a little bit of somewhat journaling and so forth. So it's really a matter of access for all, and even, you know, those who have the means to pay sometimes don't have a slot because we are full, and, you know, and those who can't, that's also not equitable whatsoever.
So again, thank you to all the committee members for the time and effort. I think this is good. I think we're, as Jeff said, hopefully moving into the school year with some clarity around what, as a group, we want to focus on. So thank you. Appreciate everyone's efforts on that. So that having been said, we'll move it to opening a school. Jeff's going to share some stuff, and then I just want to say a few things before we open it up to the committee. So go ahead.
So thanks, Chris. So one of the pillars of our district is safe and school environment for our faculty and staff and whoever, and students and whoever our visitors are. As of March 13th, 2020, it has been challenging at best to maintain a safe environment that pleases all, to make decisions that please all, and open school. People have had differing opinions since we closed our doors on March 13th, 2020. We reopened with a decision by this committee on how we reopened in August of 2020, and then fully reopened April 5th, 2021, to a full-in-person environment. One of the pieces that we followed with our health leadership in the district, and Lisa Tobin, our lead nurse or our COVID specialist, has been on board, we followed DESI recommendations and MassDPH recommendations since we started, since the closure of 2020. So I'm going to read, and I want to preface, when we left here in June 16th, I thought we were going to open like 2019 all over again. We had high hopes that we wouldn't have a conversation about masks and social distancing, and all I knew was we were going to have a lot of hand sanitizer because we got cases and cases and cases of that. So I knew your students' hands were going to be very clean when they got home. I'm going to read what I received from DESI along with the Mass Department of Public Health on June 30th, 2021. So let me just read the memorandum, so it's in record, so people at home can see this. I know it was attached to the Google Doc that we sent out as a survey on public comment, and it's been on our website, and it's been attached to a letter that I sent home. So, background and context, this is to superintendents, charter school leaders, assistant superintendents, collaborative leaders, leaders of approved special education schools from Jeff Riley, Commissioner of Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, along with Margaret Cook, Acting Commissioner of Mass Department of Public Health. As noted in the updates of DESI COVID-19 guidance released on May 27th, 2021, all district school and schools will be required to be in-person, full-time, five days a week this fall, and all previously released Department of Elementary and Secondary Education health and safety requirements will be lifted. That's key for folks right now. I am not allowed to offer a remote program for next year. It's expected under time and learning that we are in five days, full-time, in-person. Recent updates by the Center for Disease Control, CDC, to its guidance for COVID-19 prevention in K-12 schools emphasize the importance of all students returning to full-time, in-person school this fall. The CDC guidance supports the use of vaccines as the primary mitigation measure in school settings, and also continues to recommend masking in K-12 schools. Additionally, according to the CDC, because of the importance of in-person learning, schools where not everyone is fully vaccinated should implement physical distancing to the extent possible within their structure, but should not exclude students from in-person learning to keep a minimum distance requirement. Massachusetts has among the highest vaccination rates of any state in the nation, and evidence continues to reinforce that the COVID-19 vaccines are highly effective, especially against severe disease. At the same time, even though students not yet vaccinated, the apparent risk of COVID-19 to children remains small. These factors can continue to reinforce that previously instituted COVID-19 mitigation measures in schools settings are no longer necessary. In a letter released early this month, U.S. Education Secretary Cardona reinstated the importance of COVID-19 vaccination adoption for eligible students. This reinforced the measure sent by the Department of Public Health, DPH, and DESI Commissioners Barrell and Riley last school year, indicating that vaccination is a critical strategy in mitigating the impact of COVID-19 on in-person learning. The Fall 2021 Recommendations. This guidance document was developed jointly by DESI and DPH and outlines recommendations on masking, COVID-19 testing, and quarantine protocols. It also includes information on back-to-school vaccine clinics, local vaccine sites, public awareness materials for families. DESI and DPH also continue to encourage schools to maintain ventilation upgrades from this past year as feasible, which we have, continue hand hygiene practices, and extend policies for students and staff to stay home when sick. As always, we will monitor the public health situation and may issue additional guidance as needed. Please note, the DESI COVID-19 Help Center remains open and available for consultation with districts and schools. Please do not hesitate to call with any questions. DESI and DPH will also issue frequently asked questions in this guidance. Masking. This fall, DESI and DPH strongly recommend that all students in kindergarten through grade six wear masks when indoors, except students who cannot do so due to medical conditions or behavioral needs. Masks are not necessary outdoors and may be removed while eating indoors. DESI and DPH also strongly recommend that unvaccinated staff in all grades, unvaccinated students in grade seven and above, and unvaccinated visitors wear masks indoors, in alignment with the statewide advisory on masking. DESI and DPH recommend that schools allow vaccinated students to remain unmasked. Any individual at higher risk for severe disease from COVID or with a household member who is at high risk is encouraged to mask regardless of vaccination status, consistent with the updated DPH advisory on face coverings and masks. Any child or family who prefers to mask at school should be supported with this choice. By federal public health order, all students and staff are required to wear masks on school buses at this time. All staff and students must wear masks while in school health offices. Additional guidance for school health professionals is forthcoming with DPH. Please note, DESI and DPH will continue to consult with medical advisors and may update the masking requirement above as we learn more about COVID-19's effects on hospitalizations in Massachusetts and on children. COVID-19 Testing. Districts and schools are highly encouraged to maintain and establish a robust plan for COVID-19 testing in schools, including both diagnostic testing and screening, pool testing for students and staff. DESI and the Executive Office of Health and Human Services will continue to offer these services at no cost to districts. These no-cost services will include operational supports for districts who would like additional staff to conduct testing onsite or help with testing logistics and communication. Diagnostic testing, such as the Binex Now Rapid Antigen Test, is an important tool for use in testing asymptomatic close contacts as part of the updated quarantine guidance, see below. Diagnostic testing is especially important this year as we head into cold and flu season. Districts are strongly encouraged to sign up for the statewide COVID-19 testing as soon as it becomes available, later in August, to minimize the number of students required to quarantine outside of school. We just did that. Further information is forthcoming. Contact Tracing and Quarantine Protocols. DESI and DPH will soon release a new version of protocols for responding to COVID-19 scenarios in a document. As part of this guidance, districts in the statewide testing program will use other approved diagnostic tests, and will be able to implement new test-and-stay protocols in lieu of requiring asymptomatic close contacts to quarantine. Under test-and-stay, asymptomatic close contacts will have an option to remain in school and be tested daily with the Binex Now for at least five days. Vaccinated staff and students are exempt from quarantine. And then it has back-to-school vaccination clinics, which I will post as we go. Saying, doing, saying that, we have followed DESI guidelines and DPH guidelines since we started. So to that, I asked Lisa Tobin, our lead nurse, to ask both of our Boards of Health and our school physician for a statement based on the fact that my recommendation to the school committee tonight will be to maintain and follow the DESI and DPH guidelines as I just outlined. So I'm going to read you the statements from both Boards of Health and from our school physician. So in response to that question, Lisa emailed all three and said, Jeff is going to recommend to the Board to follow DESI and DPH guidelines. Gilamato from Hanson Board of Health, good morning, Lisa. I feel the same as Jeff. Seeing what's going on with the rest of the country's school systems, I don't think we should act individually. Mass counties are now in the high CDC risk category. I believe the governor, along with DESI, DPH, will come out with other guidance, or with guidance in the near future. From David Belcher, our school physician, thanks. I feel the proposal is probably as good as it's going to get at this moment. People need to be aware that this is a fluid situation, and if COVID numbers climb quickly after the start of school, universal masking-wearing may be necessary. Hopefully, that will not be the case. Obviously, we will follow DESI and DPH's lead. The Delta variant appears to behave a little differently and affect children more. I like the idea of survey testing. And from the town of Whitman, Daniel Kelly, good afternoon, Lisa. I reached out to my board members individually about DESI's recommendation after you asked for a recommendation for Board of Health. I want to be clear, we weren't able to sit down and talk about this as a board, and we won't be able to do so until the 24th. So it's difficult to paint the full picture of what everyone had to say. However, they are in support of what DESI has recommended with some changes. The number-one concern is the safety of our students and staff. The concern lies not only in the fact that many school-aged children are ineligible for vaccination, but also the fact that these children are in classrooms together for more than 15 minutes. Also, it's extremely difficult to socially distance all students, staff at all times. There is also concern about having middle ages split, for lack of a better term, as far as the sixth graders having to wear masks but seventh and eighth not wearing masks. The Board recommends the use of masks in all schools in order to keep everyone as safe as possible. This recommendation falls in line with the Board's recommendation on the 10th, for people to wear masks indoors and public, recommendation, not mandate. However, we all understand that at the end of the day, this is going to be a decision made by the school committee and administration, and we agree that Mass, DPH, and DESI have done their due diligence. As we move forward, we'll, as we move forward, things will be ever-changing, and it's possible with what the Board recommends along with DESI will change. The schools have done a great job at handling COVID-19 pandemic, and we are sure you'll continue to do so. Best, Dan Kelly. So those are three. That's the information I received from our Boards of Health and what I said about DESI. My recommendation, this is a very difficult decision on the Board and the committee. I know we had close to 500 responses from the community ranging all over the place that the committee members were able to read over the weekend. I know it was really light reading, 500 responses. I appreciate everyone who chose to respond. I want to make sure that folks in the community know that those responses will be printed on our website. Your name and your address will be on our website along with your full comments. We deleted your email addresses. I don't feel people need to know and be able to contact you. So I'll leave it with the committee. My recommendation is to follow, as we have, the DESI, DPH protocols, and that's what I have for you, and I'm able to answer questions as we go.
So before I open up the committee, just a couple things. So one, I think for the public to understand, none of us here, at least as far as I know, are doctors or epidemiologists. That's not, we're volunteer folks. That's not what we do, right? So we try to be as informed as we can. We rely on the guidance of those that provide it, and so we're trying to do the best job we have, but, you know, the state or the federal government certainly has more expertise and resources than we have. So to leave the ultimate determination up to school committees, that's what they've chosen to do. However, you may make the argument that they are far more qualified than the 10 of us to make that determination. That having been said, so again, we're not planning on, we're not planning on public comment unless the committee feels strongly that we should, and the reason for that was that we opened up public comment. So that was public comment. It wasn't a survey. It wasn't, hey, we're going to take a poll and whatever, the majority rules. It was part of the process that I just described. It was an opportunity for us as a committee to get feedback, to understand, and to gain perspective. And within those roughly 500, I think it was 495, first document, I think, was 30-plus pages, 35. I know I was reading it on Sunday, I'm sure the committee members were too, you know, it was a nice day Sunday, and, you know, we took, I can speak for myself, but I'm pretty confident in saying we took the time to read every single one of those comments. There were varying perspectives. There were perspectives that I found helpful. And I think in opening it up to the committee, I think it's just important, I would hope that we continue to have that continued respect for each other, that there are different perspectives. We're all going to have different perspectives. We're going to come together, we're going to make what we think is the best decision possible, and then as a committee, we're going to support that. And if we get additional guidance from whoever that is, the state or the federal government that requires otherwise, we will take that and likely do what we need to do. So that having been said, I'd like to open it up to the committee in terms of where we would like to go from here. Done.
I have some technical questions first. I don't know if you or Nurse Tobin, just, I've heard about tests to stay.
Lisa, can you come up and?
Yeah. And if, the DESI guidance refers to Massachusetts has among the highest vaccination rates, but if we have any feedback on specifically Whitman and Hanson vaccination rates, if we can hear about bus transportation, and just to reiterate for our families watching, you know, that, what that is, and then last, any metrics around when we may change, or when your recommendation may change within our building, how many positives we may get and so forth. So if, that's a lot, I'm sorry.
So I'm going to let you talk about testing in a minute. I'm going to talk about your vaccination rate. I'm going to talk about your vaccination rates. So what I have right now, as of today, in Hanson, our 12- to 15-year-olds, 249 one-doses fully vaccinated, 198. 16 and 19, 402 one-doses, 358. In Whitman, 12 to 15, is 430 doses, 337 fully. In Whitman, 16 and 19, 537 one-dose fully vaccinated. And if you want to just have a percentage, the town of Needham worked with Harvard to look at every town in the Commonwealth, and they've given me a list of every city, town that falls below the state average of vaccinations. The state average is 63% of 18, of 12- to 15-year-olds with one dose, and 67% of 16- to 19-year-olds with one dose. As of this last, yesterday afternoon, the town of Hanson had a 39% rating of 12- to 15-year-olds and a 63% of 16- to 19-year-olds. The town of Whitman had a, Whitman isn't W-H, had a 50% 12- to 15-year-olds one-dose and a 63% 16- to 18. So we're under the state average in both. I know if we talk to both fire departments again and our EMS, I'm sure we can get clinics as we go, just like the town of Hanson offered, we offered before school ended, we offered a clinic. It wasn't as well-attended as I had hoped. We had ordered 1,000 vaccines. We were very subpar of 1,000 in both sessions. To answer your question about busing, all students K- to 12 and all athletic teams or anybody that travels for a school event on a van or a bus will be required to mask by federal mandate. So that is a non-issue. If you're on a bus, you have to have a mask. If you're on an athletic team, if you're the football team or the cheerleaders or the soccer team, this fall on a bus have to be masked. Just letting you know, the MIAA, which is our sports governing body, has led this decision to be a local decision as far as masking on the fields or outdoors. But looking at DESI, DPH guidelines right now, everything outdoors has been masked for it. I don't know if we, the question was asked to me, I don't have an answer for you yet. If our volleyball, girls' volleyball team goes into a school that is being masked, do they have to mask or not? I don't have an answer that was asked to me at 4:00 today. I don't have an answer for you yet. But that's a great question. If a district decides to mandate masks, does that mean the visiting team and/or parents have to mask? We have to flesh through that. It's evolving, as I said, with this. But I wanted Lisa to share with you where we're at with the testing. We did not pool test last year. We found as a leadership team, health leadership team, along with both our Boards of Health, that we didn't have to pool test. They're asking again, but I think Lisa can share with you the stay, the other two tests that we're going to be involved in.
So DESI recently partnered with CIC Health to allow the students to test in our health clinics. So I am submitting the application to DESI for, to allow us to test in all of our clinics in the district. There's two layers to the testing that we're looking to do. The first one is the one you spoke about, the test and stay. So that affects quarantining. So it's the Binax Now Rapid Test that takes 15 minutes that DESI and DPH used last year in some participating districts. So the test and stay will be that if we identify staff or students as close contacts to a COVID case.
Lisa, can you bring it up just a notch?
Sure.
Speak in your Norse voice. Your mom voice.
My mom voice is better. So if we identify close contacts, either staff or students, to a COVID case, instead of doing what we had to do last year in quarantining and sending them home for at least eight days and testing at home, we now have the ability to take those close contacts and bring them to the nurse's clinic and give the Binax Now Rapid Test. And they would test for five straight days. If there's a weekend in the middle, then they would still test when they come back. So they'll get five tests, as long as they remain asymptomatic and as long as they test negative, then they don't need to quarantine and we can keep them in school. So that's the first piece. The second piece or second layer is we're going to offer symptomatic testing. So if we have a student or staff that comes into the clinic with some isolated symptoms that look like some COVID symptoms, we can then at that point call a parent and say, you know, would you like me to test them in the clinic and see if we can keep them in school? If they test negative, they are allowed to stay in school and go back to class. So those were the two that we're looking to do. CIC Health will, hoping to hear from them next week. They will help us implement the program. They'll provide us with a program coordinator. We'll get all our supplies, our testing, our software, everything from them. Once we enter the test, everything will go into DPH, and then it will still be up to us locally to inform our Boards of Health. So that way, we can keep the kids in school. We have the safety mechanism to make sure that everybody still remains negative, and we can also keep the kids that might have, you know, a runny nose or an isolated low-grade fever instead of sending them home like we had to last year, saying, well, you can't come back until you have a COVID test or a doctor's note. Now we can provide that here at school.
So Jeff, this is for you, okay? There is no mandate, okay? We do what we can, and we have an outbreak, okay, of this. And they can't do remote anymore. So I guess it is continuation of what you had asked too. What would the numbers be that we would be seriously have to change things? And also, what would the students be able to do at home? But now, of course, they have the one-on-one computer, so they could do their homework. So that would be, you know, with laptops, so that kind of helps, even though they wouldn't have the remote teaching. And, you know, I know people have asked me that question. You know, if there is an outbreak, of course, that's going to help with the immediate testing too, that it doesn't mean that 15 kids have to stay, maybe just one, but.
So a couple of, a couple of pieces to that. So what we're getting from the department is that you're not, you can't do a remote piece. If a student goes home sick, it would be just like if they were sick for a week and had the chicken pox or, you know, now that's, that's, you know, out there. I don't know, whatever, somebody, I hesitate to say the flu, but if they had the flu for six days, they would be out, they'd be doing their homework, so they'd receive their assignments. One of the pieces of that one-to-one is they actually access to Google Classroom and be able to do that. I think the piece around the quarantine, being able to test students who are asymptomatic keeps them in school, so we won't see as many kids going out on a quarantine, and maybe Lisa can help on it. I believe that to be true. But that being said, we don't have a metric, and DPH hasn't set a metrics. I'm hoping that, in the conversations I had with one of our town administrators, I said, I would take the lead from your Boards of Health. If you're seeing an uptick in your town, it would have to come back to the schools, and we would make that decision, either if it's on a Thursday and we're seeing an uptick in the community. Remember, I have the COVID, the authority right now to make a decision for the safety of our students that was granted last year. If I come to, you know, all of a sudden, there's an outbreak in Whitman or in one of our schools, and I say, look, we're having an issue, we might have to mask up, we might have to do some things like that. That hasn't been put in place yet. I think the first layer of this is determining how we're going to implement this policy or this protocol, and then work forward to implement where we go in case of. And I think I'm looking for some direction from DESI to give us the what-ifs, and they haven't done that yet. So that would be our plan, to, you know, treat the student as a student that's ill, whether we have an uptick or not, and we don't have a metrics. One of the things, my local superintendent, it's the South Shore Superintendent's Group, Mr. Granatino from Marshfield asked for that same question, and we have a small focus group to determine, to see where the metrics would, might be, either from the State Board of Health, from DESI, or our local Boards of Health. So it's not there yet.
Hillary, you're in the front.
So I think, obviously, we all read the comments, and we know that this is a big issue. That's an understatement. And I think before I say my piece, I think everybody, people here need to know, you know, I have a second grader who hasn't had a regular school year. Sorry. And I want nothing more than that from her, but I also think that in our strategic plan, it says that we need to keep kids safe, right? And I, I'm so embarrassed, and I'm emotional right now. But we have to do that, and I am, we talk about metrics, and I am very uncomfortable. I think the test and stay is wonderful, and I'm so happy that the state has finally decided that it's free because it's important. But we need, we owe it to families who have both perspectives of this issue to guarantee their safety. So to the families that want their children and want all children masked, we owe it to them as a committee to have a safeguard or a few safeguards in place to say, if it gets to this, we will mask and we will do that. Just as we owe it to families who have the perspective of, I don't want my kids in a mask because I want them to have a normal year, that if we choose to say everyone needs to be masked for their safety, that there is a benchmark that we have to take those masks off. However the will of the committee is, is fine, and I will support it, but based on these comments, I also have significant concerns, as an educator myself, of the culture of school buildings. If children are in dining rooms and parents are having conversations, the way that the tone was in some of these comments to us, and those children come into school and say those things to their peers, the discipline problems and the culture in these buildings are going to be so terrible and toxic. So whatever happens tonight, I am pleading with families, regardless of your perspective, is that you teach your children to be kind, because you don't know what a family has been through or is going through, or what their family's perspective is. But I think that as a committee, however we do this, we need to provide safeguards in place. If we are going to adopt, or I don't know if adopt is the right terminology, the DESI guidance, we have to say, we will adopt this until this happens. I don't want to adopt it and then say, oh, too late, I guess we had an outbreak and now we can't go remote, and what do we do? We have to be proactive, not reactive, with what we're going to do. And it might not happen tonight, right? Like, that might not be a thing. We still have two weeks. We have plenty of time. But I, I just think that it is, it's certainly less of a big deal than reopening a school was last year, but I think that there's more things that need to be in place so that families feel like they're supported, and we have looked and listened to all perspectives.
Thank you. Fred? Couple points. One is I don't know if we need to do any housekeeping. We do have a policy that's still in effect for face coverings that references guidance that's no longer there. So I don't know if we need to rescind that in order to move forward. I did want to make sure I brought that up. In speaking to a few people, and if I could put Lisa on the spot, sorry. We were running summer camps, and we had people, we had kids in the buildings and classrooms at the same time as being outside with each other, unmasked, I believe, with no mask policy.
There was no requirement.
No requirement for them to mask. From what I was told, some were masked. Parents sent them and wanted them masked. Others were not. Our children were very gracious, and there was no teasing back and forth or making people feel slighted because, hey, you have to wear a mask, ha-ha. None of that was occurring, from what I was told. And we had two students that tested positive, totally unrelated to our school program. It was caught somewhere else, not within the school buildings, and there was no transmission to anybody else as well. So we've sort of already started doing something with allowing people to make their own decisions with masks and been able to do it effectively.
Steve?
I think because it's just so fluid, and don't think I'm wearing a mask tonight to make a statement. I work with the public. We, I know you all heard my story about working extremely hard, seven and a half, eight days a week. I couldn't even tell you what it was like to get these libraries open across the country, these presidential libraries, which are under your federal government, and I've worked for, for 27 and a half years. And just in the month of August, to see half of them closed, and the things that have come back to us. I'm in a building where children learn, so I'm trying to be careful. I'm not saying on my, on myself that, you know, I feel like I got something or whatever, but I just, I don't, I don't think I could put it any better than Hillary had just put it. And if that could be an infomercial or some way a PSA for folks, yeah, I was startled with quite a few of those same messages. I would like to have some fluidness to this. You know, one of the choices was let the parents choose what to do, but we're in close contact. I'm wearing this at work on Saturdays and Sundays. The Monday through Friday, and my schedule's just been off the wall. While I'm at home at least four of those days, although I am taking a couple of days off tomorrow and Friday, when I'm, when I'm in work, there's only six people allowed into our building, the John F. Kennedy Presidential Library and Museum. That, to me, is so, it's like desolate, and this is 17, 18 months in. We've got this. We can do this. Hillary's message was just so, so, it wasn't only heartfelt, but it really, I still got the chills from it. It's, it's what we need, and everyone's got to put, it's hard to put a lot of things aside. And I don't care if someone tells me tomorrow, Mr. Boyce, you don't understand this. You know what? I remind myself every Sunday afternoon when I get out of work, and by the way, we only open 10 to 2, and it's very hard to get tickets. I can't even get anyone tickets, including Mr. Bill. I go down to Attleboro, and I see my two great nephews. And every moment I spend with them, I would be in the same pool. You and I could go through some Kleenexes together, Hillary, because I'll tell you, right there, I am just fascinated. The 11-month-old, I think he knows a lot of things. He might be keeping it secret or something. The three-year-old showed his father how to start my truck with a remote the other day. I'm just, you know, there's the brains, what we were talking about developing. And this hopefully is not going to disrupt or hurt a child. That's why I say maybe some fluidness, more mask breaks. I don't know what it's going to take, but we can do this. And I know it's been a lot of the other communities away from us that have mandated masks and so forth, but Whitman and Hanson, there's not many towns that sit in a circle like we do in Plymouth County, and all the hotbeds are around us. I'm only a mile from the Brockton line. I mean, you know, and Brockton always unfortunately ends up to be one of those hotbeds at times. I'm for what's being put forward with the DPH and DESI, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Steve. Chris?
So to Chris's point about us not being experts, I completely agree. I think it's on DESI and DPH to give us the guidance, and if they see fit to ramp it up and, you know, implement a mask mandate, then we should. But I don't feel comfortable myself making really these decisions because it's not my job. It's not what I do. I'd rather rely on the experts. I think Hillary brings up an interesting question. I just don't know how to answer that question, and I'm not even sure Jeff is prepared to answer that yet. And you've said as much. I get that. So I don't know, I guess that means if that's what we need to do, I'm not sure we're ready to do that tonight, right?
Yeah. So I think, I think tonight, we need to establish some degree of clarity. While we do have two whopping weeks, we only have two weeks before schools open, and I think both in terms of parents and the community, and educators, and staff, and leadership, and everyone involved, we need to set some sort of direction as to where we're going. So I do think we should decide on, we're going to follow the recommendation of DPH, DESI, and the superintendent, or we're going to do something different. And then we probably, I'll put you on the spot, but could, I'm assuming you could, you already said you're working on a group, so you probably could take away between now and then, and I'm not, whatever the committee decides. So we got to establish the direction first. But if the committee decides to, if the committee decides to follow the recommendation, I'm sure you could certainly take away between now and the next meeting, okay, here are some options, right, that we could layer on of, if this is what we decide, we're going to follow the recommendation, but if we hit this metric, we know what's going to happen. Or if we hit this metric and go back to this metric, then we know what's going to happen. That's probably something we could do between now and then, but at least it gives us a general direction. So. Anyone else before, I see you, but I want to get to everyone first. Yes, Michelle?
I'm going to play devil's advocate a little bit here and just wrote some other recommendations that have been put forth. The American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC recommend universal masking K through trial regardless of vaccination status. The Massachusetts Medical and Massachusetts The Massachusetts Medical and Massachusetts Academy of Family Pediatricians, which consists of more than 25,000 physicians, medical students and residents in Massachusetts, are calling for Baker to mandate his stance and mandate K through 12 regardless of vaccination status. So there's plenty of other opinions out there besides DESI, I just want to throw that out there and where everybody falls, that's fine, but with all that being said, I'm curious, who's monitoring the masks that the kids are recommended to wear if they're unvaccinated? Anybody? Teachers, are they stopping their day saying, oh, Suzie and Jim and Bob are supposed to have masks on and you don't, you need to put them on? Or are they ignoring that?
So you want to?
I just, I have a follow-up to that question because as a teacher, that's something that keeps me up at night and I teach high school kids and I have a different perspective. But I, I, I think at the K to 6, I am concerned about the, if, if we adopt DESI, I'm concerned and again, you know, I go right here as a teacher because I taught all year last year and you know Jeff, what last year was like, right? My concern that I have is that you've got a class of 25, let's say, and you've got 12 students whose parents want them to wear masks and that teacher now has 12 emails from the parents. I want my kid in a mask, I want my kid in a mask, I want my kid in a mask, make sure, make sure, make sure. Now my kids are five, seven and nine. I know that one of my nine-year-old will definitely, no one's wearing one, I'm going to take it off, you know? Where, how are we going to, I, I, as a teacher can say that teachers will do their best, but at what point does it stop being, right, at some point it's going to affect instruction and we want kids back in school five days a week so that they can be taught. And that's a concern that I have and I, I mean, it's a concern, but I also think that's an easy building level administration piece, that's not necessarily a school committee piece. And I would just say to families that you need to have a conversation with your children about the masks and the wearing and being open to anybody's choice and those sorts of things, but that is, you know, that's certainly a concern because I do fear, you know, that in this building, this is what the administration is saying in this building, this is what it's saying, and then you've got parents talking and, you know, I just, I think that would be catastrophic. So, but again, I don't think that that's necessarily something that we need to figure out, but it's a concern.
It's, I was, I was just going to say valid concern, we talk with our building level principals, assistant principals. I think one thing to be clear for everyone, I cannot ask students of their vaccination status, that's not, that's not out there yet, it's not something from the governor's office, and I cannot ask for teachers or, and/or parents or visitors vaccination status. It's not something that can be asked by us. However, I will ask parents if they choose to provide the vaccination status to their school nurse, it will help us in contact tracing because vaccination status is different than an unvaccinated student. So that information will come out from your building level principals. I hear both sides and on the flip side, you know, my wife's a teacher too and she said, so if we mandate masks in my district and a kid doesn't have it on, do I just send him to the office to get sent home? So this is a, this is a building level culture piece. I think you hit it on the head with parent interaction and how to speak to each other, but we will work depending on how this committee decides for us to go forward. And that's why I think, what Chris said, it's important for us to have some direction. My new teachers come in next Monday, my leadership team comes in Monday as far as principals, everybody starts next week, we don't start the week after. So we will start to prepare those conversations with our adjustment counselors, with our, our support staff to say, hey, look, you know, this is where you're at, this is, and I know parents will share information, I know elementary parents will send their teacher, if my child's not wearing a mask, can you please let me know? And I think a teacher can do that. I don't think it's going to be the responsibility of our staff to say, put it up every two minutes if that's not where we're at. If it shifts and we mandate, it shifts differently. So that's why I think it's important for this committee to help me with my folks and give them time to prepare their opening speeches, their opening day classrooms, how we set up our classrooms right now. Because there is no, there is no social distancing requirement necessarily, but I think our students and staff, we might set up some things differently if it's not a mandate versus a mandate. I also think it just gives teachers time to think about how they open up in their classrooms and what they should be expected of.
So I got Fred and Chris, but before I do, I want to make sure, anyone that hasn't shared a comment, that would, question, okay, and then we'll go round two. So Fred, Chris, Don.
I'll be, I'll be brief. In doing as much research as I can, and I agree, we're not doctors, we are not infectious disease specialists, et cetera. I was shocked to be informed that the masks that we're using are junk, they're not for infectious disease. Two o'clock in the morning, I'm tearing apart my garage, looking at all my little boxes of masks and they all say not for disease control. They're for vapor. They're not medical use, they're not medical grade. You know, another concern that I was told of, when you have, and this is for the younger children, younger children, when they're developing, do not recognize faces, they recognize facial expressions. And by them being involved with people with only masks, it hurts their development because they can't see the facial expression. You know, so that's a detriment. There's a infection going around SVT, I think it is? RSV. I'm sorry, thank you, Beth. That pediatricians are saying are caused by mask wearing in younger children and they're seeing far greater outbreaks of that. You know, so there's pros and cons to everything, you know, as far as that goes, you know, with the children. And parents do have the right to send their children with masks if they feel that they want their children to be wearing a mask, et cetera. Based on that, I would make the motion to replace policy EBCFA face coverings in the language in there that refers to the 2020 DESI guidance and to have it follow the 2021, I believe it is, DESI DPH guidance of masks being recommended but not required, there is no mask mandate. So I would make that motion.
Second that.
Okay. Discussion. Does anyone, can anyone validate that policy real quick?
Yeah.
You got it? I just want to make sure we, you got, can you just make sure that that's the right policy?
That's the right policy.
Great, thank you. I don't have them all committed to memory.
I made a copy.
Thank you.
And I wasn't sure how to exactly word it, but I figured that would be the cleanest way.
Still going in order, no, you were not.
Oh, I'm sure.
Chris and then, thank you.
So I know we have a motion. It's up for discussion. I would just like to at some point either add to that or through another motion, have Jeff follow up and work on some benchmarks.
So. So I think, yeah, so, I mean, Jeff, it's up to you, but I think if we agree to put that on the agenda next week as something discussed, we can, is that satisfied?
Absolutely. I think that's smart and that's why it's been brought up in my group.
Great. Don?
I'm extremely concerned that a recommendation is seen as an option. Oh, so I'll just decide. No, a recommendation is something that is recommended to be followed. I'm listening to our district physician, Dr. Belcher, the superintendent read his response and he did say the variant behaves differently and affects children more. So we have children 12 years and under that are in exactly the same situation today and on September 1st as they were all last year, unvaccinated, unable to be vaccinated, parents who choose and may want them to be vaccinated do not have that access. And now we're taking away one layer of protection, while it may be disputed, we, by a vote coming up on this board are taking that away. I read Newton Public Schools had eight doctors say universal indoor masks be required for their school district. If you go to local colleges, they are requiring masks, hospitals require masks, doctors' offices, dentists, Duval's Pharmacy in Whitman requires a mask. You ride a bus, you require a mask, public transportation. This is a public school and I support a universal mask mandate in the Whitman-Hanson Schools K through 12. I get emotional now because those parents are listening. And it's our job to protect every student in this district. So it'll be our vote to decide who we protect. If it were only my choice, my child, that would be easy, but this is for all. For all. They're unvaccinated.
Move to the vote, please.
No, let her finish, please, don't interrupt.
I'm finished.
Thank you. So I'm just going to ask the committee in terms of information, so does any committee member feel that they need any additional information shared at this time or would you, have you, have you done sufficient research that you'd like to vote the issue?
I just have a question. Is this vote just in regards to changing the policy that's written there because that policy is no longer what was recommended? The policy that Fred read, the policy was based on what DESI had recommended. DESI no longer recommends that, so that's why the policy needs to be changed. So is the vote just upfront right this minute on the policy and then we vote on what we want to do as a separate vote? That's my question.
It's designed to be one and the same, replacing the language.
And do what?
To, to say the language of the 2021 guidance.
Michelle, do you have it handy? Rough, do you, do you have the motion handy?
That was the intent of the motion.
To replace the policy, do you see that A, these protocols, policy to, and then to be followed, to follow the 2021, 22, DPH guidance for mask wearing to be recommended, not required?
So essentially the, the policy would point us to the new guidance and we would follow the policy. So thereby we would be following the guidance, is at least how I'm hearing, correct?
Now I have one more question. If it was a full mask mandate, at what point, or is there a point that it could be stopped? I guess is my question, you know, I mean, are we, you know, if it was voted for, everybody wears a mask, is it all year, is it for the month of September, is it till the Delta variant calms down, is it till Thanksgiving?
That's a great, that's a great question because there's no metrics for that either.
Right, that's what I mean. So either vote we take, there's no metrics, which means it could be changed by next Wednesday anyway, if we, whatever vote we take tonight.
Correct. So, yeah, to clarify, the school committee can make a vote. I believe the state can supersede the school committee and I'm going to take a leap of faith that the federal government can supersede the state. I doubt they would, but right, just follow the dollars, Fred. I'm honest. We're just not giving you fun, right? So regardless of the semantics, I think the point is it can change.
Tomorrow, the governor can make a mask mandate. I believe in Connecticut, the governor made a mask mandate yesterday to mandate masks in schools for one month.
Right.
So, 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 so if the governor, if Governor Baker comes on tomorrow, tonight's dialogue is no, you know, and we can talk about it in another month. But there is no metrics for those, you know, the city of Newton, the city of Lexington have mandated, they haven't, I haven't seen when they would retract that either, so that's something to look into as well.
Okay, so I appreciate Beth asking a question. Are there any other questions I would like to?
I just, I just have a comment because I think it's important and I don't know, this would be a suggestion that I would have, so the DESI sent out their like quote, like, here's what we do, if a person is vaccinated and someone close contact, you know, I'm talking K to 6 because none of those children can be vaccinated, so all of those kids are going to be deemed close contacts. I, I think questions that I've received are if it's a class and a student tests positive and you've got a mix of masks and no masks, is everyone a close contact, right? I will tell you that, you know, I think many of us, as we say, wistled by the graveyard last year because our kids were not close contacts at the elementary level, which is great as a working parent, that is something that makes me very nervous. In the new DESI guidance, it says classroom close contacts, an individual who is exposed to a COVID-19 positive individual in the classroom, or both individuals are masked so long as they are spaced at least three feet apart, is exempt from testing in quarantine response protocols. So to me, it makes sense if we're talking about close contacts and I know that the spacing piece is part of it, but if you are masked, there is a better chance that you are not going to be a close contact and I think that is something that families need to hear and need to know. I also think that families need to hear and need to know that if your child comes to school without a mask and they are deemed a close contact and you have consented to the test and stay, they must be masked every single day that they come to school and take that test and stay. So if transitions are difficult for your children, might want to have that conversation. I think that those are things, right, you talk about, my thing is, we need to make sure the parents, we, I think that a lot of families think that it's mask or no mask, that's it. And it's so much more complicated than that, so much more complicated than that. And it's really important that we get that information out to parents. So wait, you don't get the angry emails, so don't, you don't get the angry emails. The other thing I want to say is that last year on August 15th, the state of Massachusetts reported 471 new cases. On August 15th, 2021, the state of Massachusetts reported 3,093 new cases. That's triple. And we are having conversations about should kids wear masks in school. I don't think it makes sense, it doesn't make sense to me.
It doesn't.
I know that wasn't a question, but.
So, and to clarify the motion or the guidance, it's a strongly recommend. So the position the committee is taking, right, is strongly recommending mask wearing. So to your point, to your point, there's a big difference between saying masks aren't required, so maybe you should, it's a strong recommendation to wear masks. Again, it could be fluid, it could change, et cetera, but that's, that's the motion that's on the table presently. So, anyone else before we move to the vote on this one? Okay. So everyone is clear on what we're voting on? Yes? Okay. All those in favor? All those against? That's other one, no one's abstaining. I think if I did my math right, no abstentions. So six, four, is that what you got, Michelle? Okay. So the motion carries, we have a recommendation that we'll follow. Again, I think it's important to note.
Get the metrics next, for next.
There's going to be some metrics. It's fluid, it can continue to change. Hopefully everyone can continue to do everything possible to try and stay together as a community and try and take care of each other as best as we can, so. I think the only other item on the agenda is to adjourn. I just, as a next meeting comment, we have a lot of stuff that we talked about. It was nice this meeting to actually talk about some of the educational stuff. I think we're all hoping that we can continue that focus and make sure that the education of students in school continues to happen. But we will have a lot of things on the agenda next week. There was a lot of things that we've talked about over the last couple of months and going into the end of the school year that we said we would come back to in the fall, it's the fall. So what we'll try and do is prioritize the agenda as best we can. Jeff and I are trying to compare lists of who we agreed to follow up on what with and then we're going to try and prioritize the agenda. And what we'll do is try and get through as much of it as we can and then at that point determine if we need to have another meeting, not on the first day of school. I think that's a strong recommendation of the leadership team and the staff to not have a school committee on the first day of school, please, but we may kind of continue it. So when you see the agenda come out, we're going to try and prioritize it as what we think is order of importance, but we'll open the meeting with an agenda review so that everyone can agree, understand, if you see something at the bottom you think's really important, we'll kind of square that away and then we'll just follow as long as we can, probably go about two hours next meeting max, and then if we have to have another meeting, we will. So, everyone good? All right, with that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Have a great night, everyone.